What's that? Okay.
Back in session.
Back in session. As soon as Eric gets in. Laura, I meant to mention that we have Eric Kitchen, zoning enforcement officer, and Steve Knox, the director of building safety, also present this evening, and Mr. Dan Gartenstein, corporation counsel. Okay, Mr. Moriello, would you state your name, as I just stated, and your address?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members, thank you for having us. My name is Michael Moriello. I'm a partner with Reisley &amp; Moriello, and our office is at 111 Green Street, Kingston, New York.
Okay, and as I read previously, I would respectfully request, as I request of all parties presenting information at a board, that your presentation be concise and to the point, keeping in mind that we are neither attorneys or judges. Thank you. Proceed, please.
Yes, for the moment, I'd like to introduce two documents into the record. One is a February 12 correspondence with a notice annexed to it from myself to Dennis Doyle, and another one is a February 12 correspondence to this zoning board of appeals as a supplement.
Thank you. Mr. Kitchen, please. Should we be aware of the contents of that at this point?
I think it'll probably come out during, while we're speaking. But first of all, I'm not going to take a lot of time with the procedural aspects of this. The board knows, I made several procedural claims and positions in the paper. I think the papers that we've submitted, I think they speak for themselves. I'm sure the board probably wants to hear more about the substantive merits of the case. So if the board has procedural questions, I'm happy to answer them, but basically, we've made objections to standing from the petitioners, and we've also made objections to them being aggrieved by the decision.
Yeah, personally, I think you should make that as part of the public record, if you could, briefly.
Well, we've maintained that the petitioners don't have any standing to maintain the action. I can get into that. It's, it's, these are getting into the weeds with area of the law, and I can say that the standing issue is coupled with the fact of aggrievement. I believe that the petitioners claim in their submittal, which Ms. Polidaro gave to me before the meeting, that close proximity is enough to confer standing. I do not share that opinion, that close proximity is enough to share standing. I believe that they have to show injury in fact, specialized injury, and in this case, I don't believe that they've been aggrieved by the decision at all in probably two ways. First, their entire, the entire focus of their papers, it has to do with us, not with how the law applies to them. And secondly, the 20% rule, which I think clearly applies, clearly applies, does not apply, rather with respect to us, but clearly has been stated to apply by the code enforcement officer to them, is a, is a way that they are really being benefited from that 20%. The interpretation that was granted actually benefits them if they didn't want to keep their building up. They do have to go get a notice of preservation of action to knock it down, but they're not aggrieved by that, by the decision that affects us. And also, with respect to the 20%, the statute reads as it reads, and that's when I get into my substantive area. From a substantive standpoint, the zoning laws are in derogation of common law, so they have developed over time, and they're ruled, the boards, boards of appeal and building inspectors are, and code enforcement officers are supposed to construe them narrowly and supposed to give effect to the plain meaning of the law. And if you will, I can quote, "Absent ambiguity, a zoning board of appeals may not resort to rules of construction which alter the scope and application of a statute because no such rule gives a court the discretion to declare the intent of a law when the words are unequivocal." And that's Bender v. Jamaica Hospital, 40 New York, 2nd, 560, 1976. That's the Court of Appeals, our highest court, ruling that. Conspicuously absent from Victoria's presentation is any address of plain meaning. There's no address at all tonight of that because she needs the board to make a leap to consider wholly extraneous documents, comprehensive plan, the revitalization plan, the Brownfields plan, five newspaper articles from as long as 17 years ago, to try and speculate at what the common counsel was thinking at the time that they drafted the law that we are trying to interpret tonight, which is 405-27.1 of the zoning law. I have no idea what the common counsel was thinking. I don't think anyone has any idea. And the law doesn't allow for people to speculate as to the motivations or why they did something at the time. The words have to be given their plain meaning and their intended effect. And when the words are ordinary and plain and incapable of ambiguity, which is the case here, it's, you don't turn to legislative history to resolve that. The words are plain, and they say what they say, and...
I don't mean to interrupt you, but what words are we specifically talking about?
Well, it's termed site enhancements, specifically, and I detail it in my papers much more, in much more detail than we'll talk about tonight, but it's specifically bifurcated from all of the wording that has to do with adaptive reuse. Adaptive reuse is multiple times referred to in the zoning law and in the section of the statute. And that adaptive reuse is referred to so many times because the legislation was pointed at adaptive reuse. I have no idea why vacant land is treated differently than, and I posit that Victoria and no one else has that idea unless they were sitting on the common counsel at the time or, and can actually remember it. But I have no idea why they did something. And throughout the papers by petitioners, the board is asked to make this leap to construe and speculate and conclude as to what people were thinking at that time. And that's just simply not allowed in construction of a zoning law or in interpreting it.
So you're construing Mr. Kitchen's use of site enhancement to equivocate to new construction?
Yes, in a narrow, in a narrow fashion.
In a narrow fashion.
And I believe that that's what's required. Throughout the document that I've submitted, which is the February 10, 2020 document...
Mike, I'm sorry, just to be clear, so it's your contention that site enhancement is defined narrowly as new construction?
Yes, I believe, I believe that site enhancements are specifically, the term site enhancement encompasses an exemption from the affordable housing requirements. I think my, my clients have determined to voluntarily place 10% of their project into affordable housing.
How many units is that, for the record?
14, I believe.
14 units will be affordable housing?
The, I also would like to also point out, too, that despite what was said, that in the mixed-use overlay districts, residential uses are not allowed, that if you subscribe to the arguments by the petitioners, they're not allowed. But they're expressly allowed if you subscribe to the, to the argument by the respondent. It's, I don't think it's, I don't think it's proper to say that they're not allowed. They, they are, they are certainly allowed if you interpret it the way that Mr. Kitchen has interpreted the law.
Well, in reality, just for the record, in reality, there are people living above those storefronts, and they have been living there for quite a while, probably. I saw an article in the paper that the common counsel had voted back, I believe, in 2005 to allow residents above the storefronts. And in reality, it's an example of where the zoning law never caught up to reality. And there are, there have been people living above those storefronts for years and years, but nothing has been placed in the zoning code to allow that, other than a vote of the common counsel in 2005. That's just some clarification for the record.
And I, I would agree that if, if the respondent, if the petitioners would like to have the law changed, they should go to the common counsel and have the law changed if they don't like how it's applied. This is not the forum to change the wording of a clear statute. The, I do also make the point in my papers that there has been prior precedent in this matter. I point to E2 squared, which is, has residential in a mixed-use district, it's being built now. I was the attorney for, for that project, for RUPCO. Also, the 104 Smith Avenue project site, 72 multifamily units, that's in a mixed overlay district in 2011, and the city itself, February 2, 2018, had a request for proposal for new residential within a mixed-use overlay district with respect to the Kings Inn site.
Okay, again, just to, we want to keep for the public that's here, as well as for the record, the E-square building is not in the mixed-use area, mixed-use overlay district in the stockade area that is in the midtown area.
That's correct.
But yes, there is a building, E-square, there was a building demolished, a new building was put up. I'm not sure if there's a, I believe there's affordable housing in that.
Yes.
Okay, so we just need to keep the mixed-use overlay districts in perspective of where they located. There's two of them in the city of Kingston.
Point of clarification, Mike, do you recall what the underlying zoning is under the E, under that development, the old, is that C2?
I think it's C2. I'm not quite certain. I don't really remember.
But it's not in the mixed, it's not in the mixed-use?
It's in the mixed, it's in the mixed-use overlay. All of Midtown is in the mixed-use overlay district on Broadway.
And again, the, the respondents, you know, I, I know that they've, they brought up a fairness question here, that they're somehow being treated differently, but the law reads differently for both sides, and they're charged with knowledge of the zoning law when they buy their piece of property. And this clearly was in the law, and they could have availed themselves of that opportunity at the time. It's not the place to come here and have that be corrected just because they don't like it or they think it's unfair. And that's all I have for now.
Okay. Yep, I just, I have one, I have one question. Oh, you have a question? Okay, go ahead, Ari.
This isn't so much regarding the, what, the words written, but just kind of the spirit of what it is. This project, the Kingstonian, isn't being built in a vacuum. It is being built, or it's being, it was proposed to be built where it is because it takes advantage of a lot of the amenities that the, that this mixed-use overlay district offers. It's the walkability, the accessibility to businesses, restaurants, et cetera. So it's capitalizing off of that. So it seems, and I don't want to speculate here, but it seems fair that the same rules that should apply to other buildings as far as adaptive reuse should be applied to the adaptive reuse of vacant space. Because ultimately, in spirit, it's part of, it's part of this district. It's being built here to be part of and to capitalize off of what's already existing there. So I think to give it, to, you know, there's clearly a hole here in, in this, in what's written as far as did that account for new construction or vacant space in this particular instance, but I think it looks past what the intentions of the developers are and what the, what the matrix is before us as far as what rule should be applied to this project.
I hear what you're saying, Ari, but we need to, for better or worse, you know?
Sure.
It's like a marriage, better or worse.
Sure.
This is, this is what guides us.
Absolutely.
And I can point to probably 10, very easily, five and 10 more holes within there and contradictions, and...
Yeah.
That's why, that's why right now, there's a task force to, to put together a consultation with a vendor to rewrite the whole zoning book, because this, this has not kept up with reality, as I said before, about the residents above the buildings. But would you like to address Ari's comments?
Well, I would just say that the, that the adaptive reuse of vacant space is not what the statute speaks to. The statute specifically speaks to adaptive reuse of buildings, not of vacant space. The two are separated and read disjunctively. The, and also, with respect to the, the spirit of the law, again, zoning laws are strictly construed, and really, the board is left to reading the plain meaning and interpreting what the law says, not what it could have said or it should have said.
But...
Okay, okay. Brian, you have a question? Ari, you're...
Mike, you have, you have to admit that, that it's not clear at all. Plain interpretation of the language doesn't necessarily lead you to believe that site enhancement refers to new construction.
I, I disagree. I do think it's clear.
I mean, it could, but it isn't entirely clear.
I, I believe it's clear, but even if it isn't clear, any ambiguity in a zoning law, it's another cannon of statutory construction. Any ambiguity in a zoning law is supposed to be resolved in favor of the property owner and against the municipality. So even were the words to be ambiguous, and I don't think that they are, but were they to be ruled ambiguous, I think that cuts to a favorable decision for the respondents, too. And I have addressed that in, in the papers.
Well, and legally, we have a zoning enforcement officer that gives interpretations and opinions. That's his legal responsibility, and our responsibility is to hear appeals about those determinations.
Correct.
Any other questions, Brian?
No.
Okay, I have a question, Mr. Moriello. Has the Kingstonian project, has that been reviewed by the Historic Landmark Preservation Commission yet?
Yes, I can give an update on where we are. We've had a series, we had 23 meetings over the course of a little over a year. We've had several meetings with the Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission. We've had joint meeting with them, with the planning board, and, and they have reviewed it. Also, this, although it's not relevant here because an interpretation is type 2 under SEAKER, it does, the project does have a negative declaration that was granted in December.
Right, I'm aware of that. What about the preservation notice of action for demolition? Has that been applied for and been awarded?
No, it has not. No, we couldn't apply for that until SEAKER is completed, although there, there are people that would argue that you could, but I counsel not to do that. But, but the, no, that has not been requested yet.
Now, in Ms. Polidaro's paperwork somewhere, don't ask me to find it, I saw a description of the building as a historic building. Other than all buildings within the stockade area from Historic Landmark Preservation Commission are considered historic or subject to review. Do you know of any delineation as, of this building and any kind of register or anything as a historic building?
No, I don't. I, I don't.
Okay, I noticed it was in her paperwork.
And my client, Brad Jordan, is here. He, he says it's not designated individually either.
I know, probably if it was still the hotel, it may be designated as, but that hotel is long. I guess it's incorporated into the warehouse more than anything. Go ahead, Brian.
So Mike, in reference to the underlying zoning, the, the C2 zoning, is it your, is it your read that that zoning does not allow for any residential uses within the...
The C2 zone?
Yeah.
That's correct.
The underlying zoning.
Yeah, I don't, I, that's not, that's not in, in dispute. But the mixed-use overlay district controls over that and allows the use of residential. I would also say, too, that I think, again, somewhat exaggeratedly, this idea has been brought forth that any use can be done there. Only enumerated uses can be done, and only after they go through a very rigorous site plan, at minimum, site plan review process, and probably a special use permit process.
Yeah, and I, I'll stipulate that with the exception of, of somebody in the C2 applying for a use variance, there's really no.
Any other questions for Mr. Moriello? Do you have any questions for us, Mr. Moriello?
No, I, no, I do not.
Okay. All right, thank you. Ms. Polidaro, would you like to come up and make final comments, please?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello.
Hello again.
So I don't disagree with Mr. Moriello. When a zoning law is unambiguous and unequivocal, we look to plain meaning. Unfortunately, the plain meaning of site enhancements is not clear, and that's why we have to apply all of these rules of statutory interpretation. And there are several, and I've given you some, and I'm sure you'll discuss with your attorney. But when you don't look to plain language, you have to look at the zoning law as a whole in order to give it meaning. You don't want to have an interpretation that would render everything before it and everything after it meaningless. I think the leap here is not that new resident, new residential units are not allowed. The leap is that site enhancement allows uses that are not otherwise enumerated in the zoning law. So, you know, he was laughing when I said, when I said, "dog food factory," but, I mean, site enhancement has no limitation whatsoever. It could mean natural gas factory. It could mean hot dog factory. I mean, any potential use that fits onto that big site that puts in a sidewalk is now a pedestrian-friendly, walkable use. So I think the leap is that site enhancement is allowing uses that are not otherwise explicitly permitted in the district.
Would you be willing to use the word instead of an absolute, "potential"?
In what part of that sentence?
Potential. What was it, "dog food factory"?
Sure, sure. I mean, those are just hypotheticals taking it out.
No, no, but I mean, you're making it as an absolute, that automatically someone wants to put up something, they automatically can do it. I can assure you, I see the planning board chair in attendance here, that she would probably contend that that's not true. She would want to look at the site plan, her board would look at the approval.
Of course, right. It would have to go through approvals.
So it isn't an absolute that anything goes.
I'm just talking about whether you can even make that application in the first place.
I would rather use the word potentially anything could go.
Sure, potentially. That's fine. As far as prior precedent, I'm not familiar with those other projects, and there wasn't time to do a FOIL request, but I do first question what the underlying district is for each of those projects.
It's, it's the mixed-use overlay district in Midtown, Kingston.
Right, but the underlying zoning, I'm not sure if it permits something different. So I can't speak to that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But what I can say is that if the city has made a mistake in the past, it's not bound by it. The zoning board didn't render that determination. The case is Parkview Associates.
Eric, or Steve, do you know what zone that is? Cedar Street or Broadway?
I know it's in the mixed-use overlay district.
What's the underlying?
I know that just past there is an R2 district.
It's R2?
R2.
O2.
O2 up until the Cross Street.
It's an old, that's an old zoning, old...
Up until UoJima Lane.
Yeah.
It's O2.
That was, this is another example of where the zoning code has lagged. That was once mom-and-pop stores, office buildings, et cetera. The O is office, obviously, and it's quite a bit different these days.
Okay, well, so again, without, without knowing the specifics, I'm not sure if the circumstances are identical, and the city is not bound by any prior mistakes it's made. In this Parkview case, in New York City, they issued a building permit for a high-rise that was built, then someone looked at the zoning code and said, "Wait a minute, we shouldn't have done that." And you don't get vested rights in, in something that was done wrong. People make mistakes, cities make mistakes, it happens. It, it doesn't mean that we have to continue making those mistakes.
I, I again do not want to give the public misinformation. I can assure you that it was vetted very thoroughly and no mistakes were made.
Again, I'm not saying that there were. I don't know anything about those projects. I'm just giving you the argument that if they were...
I would put my bets on that.
Okay. I'm sure they were vetted, again. I'm, I'm just putting it on the record that even if there was a mistake, you're not bound by it. As far as fairness, you know, knowledge when you buy property goes both ways.
What's that?
Knowledge of the zoning goes both ways. When my clients bought property, they thought they were buying in a, you know, protected historic district that was going to maintain a small character, a small walkable character, and, you know, the applicants had a different opinion when they read the zoning law. So again, that's not determinative in this case because there is this ambiguity. And standing, I gave you a new submittal on standing, on why my clients do have standing to bring this case. They have standing for two reasons. One is due to proximity, you know, several of the buildings are, you know, within 300 feet, within 500 feet of the project site. But second, they're uniquely harmed as being owners of property within the mixed-use overlay district, which are affected and impacted by this determination. The determination clearly says that existing structures have to provide affordable housing and that new structures don't, and so they're impacted in a way that most of the residents of the city of Kingston are not.
Excuse me, if you don't, you keep saying that it explicitly says it don't. It's, it, the, it's, the affordable housing, it's moot on that, it doesn't say anything.
Oh, no, the determin, let me see, the determination does say that. It says, I will read it.
What determination?
Oh, the, Mr. Kitchen's determination.
Uh huh.
He writes, "It is clear that..."
But you know where in the statute does it say it?
Mr. Kitchen says...
That's what I'm referring to, not the determination.
Oh.
It doesn't...
But what does the determination say?
Well, the determination is what we're appealing, because we're bound by this determination.
What are you referring to?
"It is clear that affordable housing requirements only apply to adaptive reuses of existing buildings. In new construction, there is no such requirement."
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought he had said.
Right, so that's, that's the issue.
That's an issue, absolutely, in your opinion.
Yes, yes. And then as far as, you know, the allegations about being anti-competition, you know, both parties are sophisticated developers. My clients have to preserve their rights. They've made significant investments in the city, and, you know, they have to preserve their rights. their rights with respect to those investments.
As far as, I'm going to go out on a limb and I may be wrong and I've been wrong in the past, but I don't believe this decision will be based on standing, okay?
That's good to hear.
I may be outvoted, but in my opinion, it's not going to be, this decision is not going to be based on standing, in my opinion, in my vote.
So I, I won't discuss it any further. You have my, my letter, so. That's it for me. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Mr. Moriello, you're up. Then we're done. Then we move to our other two agenda items.
Yes, with respect to prior precedent, the examples that are given are illustrative of what has occurred in the past. That, that has absolutely occurred here.
Absolutely.
I'm not claiming a vested rights argument at all. I don't think that the park, I don't, I think the, the Parkview case has any relevance to, to what we're here about. But I would also say that in, in the submittals, you will see a host of statutes, canons of statutory construction and citations to many Court of Appeals cases and appellate Division Third Department cases, which is our department. So it's not Mike Moriello saying this, it's the Court of Appeals that's saying it. On the countervailing point, there's very few citations in the documents which are submitted by the respondents because I believe the law isn't on their side. So it requires you to go outside of the canons of statutory construction under zoning and hypothesize as to what was meant. And I just would leave you with that, you know, Abe Lincoln once said that, "When the law is against you, you argue the facts. When the facts against you, you argue the law. When the law and the facts are against you, you argue everything else." And I think that Victoria's done a good job at arguing everything else, but it doesn't carry the day.
Always good to quote Abe.
Yes.
That's it?
That's it, that's it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Moriello before he steps down? Okay. No? All right. Okay, so just to review, we are going to keep the public hearing open. Written comments, now that everyone's had an opportunity to hear the two parties' legal arguments about the determination of the zoning enforcement officer, the written comments about those, about that decision can be submitted until February 28th to the Building Safety Division. And we will be meeting again in March, and we may have a meeting before that if we call a special meeting. Haven't reached a decision this evening. So with that, we're going to move on to number two on the agenda.